Okay, we will now, it is Tuesday, January twenty-sixth at just about eight thirty-five. And we will call the regular City of Twinsburg Council meeting to order. Shannon, would you call the roll?
Mr. Scafidi?
Here.
Mr. Sorese?
Here.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Here.
Mr. Roden?
Here.
Mr. Fury?
Here.
Mr. Steele?
Here.
Ms. McFerrin?
Here.
Okay, next we have the invocation and the pledge led by Ms. McFerrin.
We ask for guidance and direction in all the city matters before us tonight. We give thanks to be able to gather together, let's continue to strive to make our community a better place, help us to work together, and may we give our best always. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the approval of the minutes from the January twelfth council meeting. Are there any changes or additions or subtractions? Hearing none, the minutes will stand as written. Audience participation.
First, we have Dustin Bazemaggy.
Dusty Bazemaggy, ninety-seven, twenty-seven Ravenna Road, and that's in the northeast quadrant of the square. Back in November, I stood right here at this podium and I told you that I was against the CIC as it currently exists. I see steps are now being taken to fix that. On page six of last week's bulletin, there was an article that said the city is going to try and counter the misconceptions of the CIC and is looking to raise awareness in the community about the CIC. Mayor Yates was quoted as saying it was always the plan to get residents involved in the CIC. CIC member Matt Solura said they are working to make the organization more transparent. Perhaps if residents had been part of the CIC from the beginning, this would not be necessary. His use of the words "more transparent" are confusing. Something is either transparent or it is not transparent. It's like on or off. No one tells their child to go up to the bedroom and turn the light more off. I think what he meant to say was unfortunately, we didn't do everything right and we want to rectify the situation. Mayor Yates also said more resident involvement we have, the more information we can get to the residents is what is going to dispel the negative perceptions of the CIC. In the same article, Mr. Finch said there are no specific qualifications to be a resident representative on the CIC. You only need to be pro-central Twinsburg development. I thought to myself, hey, I stood right here at this podium and told the city council what a great job of development Sheldon November did with the dilapidated building next to my house. In case you forgot, I told you when he invested in the property, there was only one tenant left in the building. He then installed a new roof, new gutters, along with a new facade, a new parking lot, and new lights. Then he added new landscaping and he cuts the grass regularly. As I was writing this, I looked out the window and counted six tenants' names on the new sign that he installed. On another occasion, I stood here and I mentioned all of the wonderful development I see in both Tremont and Ohio City. I told you about restaurants, shops, and boutiques that are nestled into old houses and storefronts. Recently, right here in Twinsburg, the Green Bridge Tea House opened in the Century House on the corner of Route eighty-two and Church Street. Now, if these two examples are part of your idea of development, I know someone who may be able to help you dispel some of the negative perceptions of the CIC. On the other hand, if the sole idea is to buy up every house and every building, both dilapidated and still viable, then tear them down. Give the land to a builder who's going to get a ten-year tax abatement so they can erect dozens or even hundreds of two-story mixed-use cookie-cutter units that have first floors that are filled with Verizon, payday lenders, Dunkin' Donuts, and Starbucks that are identical to the ones that are already in Macedonia and sold, and whose upper floors have a two-hundred-dollar-a-month rent apartment, I'm afraid the negative perceptions will continue. Next, I would like to suggest that there should be some qualifications to be a resident representative. First, the reps should at least live in Ward Three. And more consideration should be given to those who live in or around the twenty-four acres involved. Only a nearby resident would be fully aware of the unique issues that residents will face when the rehabilitation begins. You may even live in Ward Three, even as close as Darian Lane, and you may not be aware of semi-trucks that are sitting, idling, rumbling in parking lots at five AM with a load of building material such as drywall or drugstore supplies, belching diesel fumes into the nearby open-bedroom windows while the driver waits for the construction site or the drugstore to open at seven AM. Finally, the last qualification should be that the people who are chosen to be representatives cannot be realtors, architects, lawyers, builders, developers, or anyone else who may be perceived to have even the slightest conflict of interest with the upcoming project. Otherwise, negative perceptions of the CIC will only continue.
Thank you. Shannon, next.
Mike DeSillo.
Good evening. I'm Mike DeSillo, one-one-two-nine-six, Palm Lane. With regards to the roundabout, it's been a discussion this evening, I'd like to make some comments, probably not that we'll receive by some. But the mistake that was made by this council was not made two years ago, the mistake was made eight years ago. If council would have listened to the residents eight years ago, they would have realized that the traffic count at Green in comparison to ninety-one is nowhere near the same. The study that the council had, and I understand is, I know that three or four council people read it. Now, there's two new council people here, obviously, that didn't read it, but the others that were on council at the time, I don't know if they read it or not because I never met with them. I've met with the other four, one whom's mayor now. The study revealed, number one, that that traffic count was not the same. It claimed it was, but it wasn't. Both options reduce delay and increase travel speed along the corridor. Both options being signalized traffic and roundabouts. Both options provide more gaps for minor left-turn movements. Traffic signal option would provide slightly more acceptable gaps, traffic lights, for the minor street left-turn movements. Regardless of the option chosen, traffic on the side streets may have some difficulty and delays at peak times. The study also revealed that the roundabouts would create smoother traffic in off-peak hours. Really, we need that, don't we? Off-peak hours. Peak hours is where we need it. The simulation model has shown that either improvement will provide acceptable pedestrian movements. And finally, on the simulations, it said the simulation model shows backups on the West Glenwood Drive, leg under the roundabout option during the PM peak hour. This result is not consistent with the capacity analysis, and we believe the simulation model is being pessimistic at this location. Really? Only at that location it was pessimistic? It had the same data for the rest of the study. How come it wasn't pessimistic anywhere else? I have a problem with this report. And if council had listened to the residents, and there were many, I know my daughter was one that had over five hundred signatures, and there were seven condo units in Ethan's Green that had over seven hundred signatures in opposition to this roundabout. That's why I say the mistake wasn't made two years ago, it was made eight years ago. Now, in regards to this, what you want to do in stopping the second one, I'm in agreement with it. To stop it, or in the least, in least sense, what we ought to do is have the consultant come back and give us a simulation with a traffic signal at Meadowwood and a roundabout, and see what the traffic movement is. If it shows that there's a backup, then put the second simulation with two roundabouts and see which one is better before you make a decision. But I'm in agreement that this mistake was made eight years ago. If it's going to cost us a half a million dollars, what's the difference? Everybody keeps talking about the funding we're getting, we're getting funding. Let me remind you, we have four pockets. One is for the city, one is for the county, one is for the state, and one is for the federal government. So when you're talking about our money, it's our money all the way down the line, not just locally. We pay all the bills. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's none.
No others? Okay. Thank you. Any awards and presentations?
Hold on a second. Somebody did walk off with our original sign-in sheet, so were you on the original one, Mike?
Sure, come on up.
I apologize.
Come on up.
I'm Mike Turle, nine-nine-three-zero, Forest Lake Drive. I just wanted to speak very briefly on Twinsburg Community Theater. I'm not sure if Derek's going to be speaking on it tonight, so I don't want to steal any of his thunder. We closed our show this weekend. We had a great, amazing turnout this weekend, actually for the whole run. Nearly two hundred people, huge, I'll let Derek give the numbers, I don't want to take away from that. But I wanted to thank everybody in the city of Twinsburg who came out to see the show. I saw Mr. Yates there Sunday, I believe.
Sunday.
I want to thank you for coming. I hope that we entertained you and...
It was a fantastic show and it's amazing, you know, one hundred and seventy in the cast, all the talent we have here in Twinsburg.
It was a lot of work, but it was a lot of fun, and it was genuinely our privilege to entertain you and everybody in the city of Twinsburg. There's probably close to five, we had big numbers, so there's probably close to five or seven hundred people. So if any of you guys were there and I didn't see you afterwards at the meet and greet, I apologize, but I wanted to thank everybody and thank the Parks and Rec Department and the city for cooperating with Twinsburg Community Theater and allowing us to do this. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next we will move on, awards and presentations. I don't see any, so I'm assuming we have none. Okay, council communication committee reports. Under my committees, Compensation Committee did meet tonight, and I'm sure I'll yield to Mr. Fury, he'll be giving a report on that. My other committees, Finance Committee will be meeting in two weeks on February ninth at six o'clock here at City Hall. Other than that, I have no further report. Mr. Steele.
The ARV Committee met on January twenty-first. They had three cases. One was for Fox Hollow, which is owned by Saint Cosmos, it was the Leith Sunroom. They approved that with the notes. Then the other one was Scenic View, which is a new home by Pulte. They approved that, going into Corvitz Farm. I had an addition on Ravenna Road, they requested the homeowner to come back with photos. And then they looked at preliminary plans for Case Parkway South in addition to the business Western Reserve Wire there. And I believe they made some notes on that, and the guy is going to come back with something about windows along the side. So they'll be back. And that's it. Finance will meet next week, and so far, take care.
Okay, very good. Ms. McFerrin.
Well, Parks and Recreation Committee hasn't met, had a meeting, but I did want to say I was able to go to the opening weekend for the Twinsburg Community Theater, and it was over twenty-eight hundred tickets sold. It was a great performance with over two hundred people involved in it. Chamber of War did meet, and we had some discussion on how the city could get more involved with the businesses. And an idea was brought up about maybe an evening with the city, where the businesses would come and meet city officials. And then the next actual chamber meeting itself will be on January thirteenth, where Mayor Gates will be doing the State of the City. Goff has not met in compensation. I'm sure Mr. Fury will fill everybody in on that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fury.
Thank you. As several people have said, we had a Compensation Committee meeting earlier this evening. We discussed the goals and information that we were looking to cover. We briefly talked about an overtime report. We discussed the salary ordinance and some changes. And we will need to set a time for our next meeting as we get some information in from the requests that we had this evening. The Planning Commission will meet next Monday, that'll be February first regarding a solar energy system for GE Rudor Stokes on Route ninety-one. And on February ninth, I'll be attending the Northern Ohio City Council Association Annual Dinner and a forum that will be covering planning for a strong public safety initiative. We are a member of this organization, so if any of the other council people would like to attend, I can give you the flyer you should be getting.
What time is it, Mr. Fury?
That is at six o'clock.
It's council night. That's my only...
Oh, excuse me.
Yeah.
That's the second...
Yep, that's February ninth, it's council night, that's why I asked.
I just caught that, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm not going to go. I'm going to be with you, Sam. I want to hang out with you that night.
Hey, we'll excuse you, go ahead.
They usually do it on Thursdays.
Just bring us a doggy bag.
You could have just let that go.
Well, I just, I didn't want you to, you know, we would miss you here.
Thanks, Sam, I appreciate it. That's all I got.
That's it? Okay. Mr. Roden.
Good evening. The Environmental Commission will meet Thursday, February eleventh here in Council Chambers. And I just want to go over some dates that we now have for the different projects that we're working on. One is Earth Day, that'll be April twenty-second, and we're changing that from where we had it in the morning, it's now going to be in the evening time, four o'clock to seven PM at the Fitness Center. So you get more walkability and more visibility when people are at the Fitness Center. And then we have the Cleanup Day, which we made twenty-first, that's from nine-thirty to eleven-thirty AM. And again, we'll meet in the Rec Center and we'll have the refreshments and all that, like we've done in the past, and it's a huge success. And then we also know free, the free shredding, excuse me, for residents and the city of Twinsburg will be on Saturday, June eleventh, from nine AM to noon. And they're going to bring a larger truck, and all that paper does get recycled. So we've got a lot of good projects up and coming, and we've got some legislation tonight that'll change a little the dynamics of the Environmental Commission, I'm pretty excited about it. So I look forward to that. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sorese.
Thank you. None of my committees have met at this time, so I have no report.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Stoffer?
The same, none of my committees have met. I have no report.
No report? Okay. Next, we'll move to the mayor, mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Scafidi. Good evening, everyone. Couple of things I'm going to run through here. So I did attend the services for Dean David Moen, who was the, one of the deans that was very influential at Kent State, that helped really spur the regional campus that we have here at Kent State. So it was a, they had it at the new campus, and it was a well-attended, great memorial to him. So I did attend that. Yeah, his family's in our prayers. I did attend on January fourteenth, the Mayor's Managers and Service Directors Meeting. This is a meeting that we do, I believe, quarterly, that gets mayors and service directors together, just to talk about different events, things in the city. Usually this time of year, we're talking about snow and removal. This meeting, we happen to talk about what are we going to do with all the salt that we got to buy, so, because we haven't really had too many events. But that's a very informative meeting that helps really share ideas from a regional standpoint. I did meet with, also on the fourteenth, I met with Zoe and Elena Felber, who were two high school students who are now co-chairing the Relay for Life in Twinsburg here. So I would encourage you to put together teams. I know the Relay for Life died off the last couple of years, but these high school students are, I guess, very anxious to get things back the way they were. I know they're going to go back to an overnight, so I guess I would encourage both, and I'm going to try to send something out to the employees here to see if we can get a team together, but they're trying to get Relay for Life back revived here in Twinsburg. I did attend the Ramtech Grand Opening. This is the Robotics Center at the Calga Valley Career Center. And I must say, I've never been to that facility before, and if you haven't been there, I'd encourage you, council, to go to that center and tour it, because it's an unbelievable facility. I didn't realize the size of it, or the amount of students that go through there, and the type of learning that they can obtain there. So it's, you know, it's definitely, you know, we as parents, I think, get so caught up in college and pushing our kids through a neck route. However, there's so many opportunities for kids these days to look at different careers, and the training that we have available to us here in Twinsburg is unbelievable at that facility. Let's see, Saturday the sixteenth, I attended the Tiger Wellness Program. We had it at the high school. It was a great turnout, we had vendors there. Mark Bendis from the high school organized that, but it was, it was fun having all the kids come through, different fitness challenges, and hopefully that's something that they continue to do and promote here in the city. I also, let's see, on the nineteenth, attended the, we have a Regional Mayor's Association, and we had Tim Ryan come speak to us. It was a delegation meeting, just providing updates as to kind of what's going on at the federal, you know, level. So it was a good meeting. This is something, I also attend another meeting today with this organization, and we're looking at, it's different topics that are going around. I know Hudson was there today, and I encouraged him to talk about some of the work they're doing with their computer infrastructure in the city. Let's see, on the nineteenth, we also had boards and commission interviews, so I'd like to thank all the residents that came out. Again, it was, I think we interviewed twenty, around twenty people. We finally filled the golf advisory board and the Environmental Commission, but again, this was the biggest turnout we've ever had for residents when it comes to open seats on boards and commissions. So thanks to everyone who came out. And if you didn't get selected, I just encourage you to stay involved. All these meetings are public, and please, you can attend even though you're not officially sitting on that committee. Let's see, I attended the Summit Economic Leadership Breakfast at Kent State. This is a new breakfast that the Chamber is hosting, and it's just bringing together businesses and leaders from around the area, just to meet and network on a, I believe it's on a monthly basis, we're going to meet once a month. But it was a good turnout for the first meeting. Kent State gave a great overview of some of the services they provide to businesses some of which I weren't even aware of, and also to residents. So, you know, Kent State's campus here also provides a lot of services and educational abilities for residents and seniors also, so if they're not in that college line, you know, career path, I guess. I also attended the Safe Routes to School. We're meeting with a representative from Akron that's helping us plan and potentially look at grant dollars to provide, promote and provide safe routes in school for kids that can walk and bike to school. So this is something that we need to bring, we're going to be talking with the school system. The first meeting we had included the school system, we're going to continue to talk with them, to see if we qualify for different levels of funding, potentially for sidewalks or to put together programs for the school district, just to try to promote, it's an overall wellness, but just encouraging kids and families to bike and walk to school versus taking them to school in cars and busing. See, last night, I attended the Library Twinsburg Speak Spanish, and this is a new program the library's doing. It's a year-long program to try to get Twinsburg residents to learn a new language. So it was interesting, the apps and the different materials that they're providing, and they had music there, but it was, it was a good turnout, and I encourage anyone to, if you didn't, if you missed last night, to check with the library and attend the next one. I know this Thursday, we have the Chamber Women's Expo coming up, and it's a great event. I know there's a lot of vendors that they have already lined up for this, but I encourage all the residents to attend that. And then lastly, it was already mentioned once, but the Twinsburg on Broadway, the Community Theater event was a, was a great performance. Again, it's just, it's amazing the talent we have here in Twinsburg, and we're able to put that together for our residents. And that is all I have.
Okay. Department heads?
Yep.
Department heads. Derek, you want to start?
Good evening. Yeah, I just wanted to echo on the community theater's part of it. A lot of people don't even know that it is run through our department, and it is a huge undertaking. It starts, you know, we're already planning for the next year, we restarted a couple months ago for two thousand and seventeen's show. But I do want to personally thank the committee, the Twinsburg Community Theater Committee, which is Heather Kramer, Laura Mensur, Melissa Meritas, Andrew Gordon, and then underneath them, there's countless of volunteers that help run the day, show operations backstage, front-of-house. With a hundred and seventy in the cast, it is a crazy, crazy backstage with, you know, a typical cast member might get one costume change, where I think the majority of this cast got between four and six costume changes. And you're trying to costume people in and out of things as quick as you can, because they're back onstage in two minutes. And this was our most riskiest show I think we've ever done. It's not a story, it was snippets of thirty different musicals, and the community really responded. So I want to thank everyone who came out. I thought the show was quite spectacular and nothing I've seen before, especially at the community theater level, so I was very impressed. And I want to thank Shawna Tally-Nitzel, artistic director, Jim Bolther, art producing director, and Chelsea Salvalgio, our musical director. It was nice to have live music back, we haven't had that in a few years. And next year, we will be doing Disney's Little Mermaid, so that is going to be another huge, whenever Disney's involved, it's a huge production, so that'll be a ton of cast, probably very popular too, to itself, so we're really excited about that. I don't have all the final financial figures, but it's definitely, as I come to every year for finances, definitely another profit-making program for this year as well, as has been consistently over the years. So I will have those numbers once we get a few invoices. I do want to announce the Twinsburg Fitness Center, as I mentioned before, is going to twenty-four-seven access, so it'll be open twenty-four hours a day, beginning February fifteenth. We will have the track, the weight room, the synergy room available. It's a totally, it's an add-on to your membership, you know, not everyone gets it, although if you choose to add it on, and it's a different FOB entry system. There's a lot of information coming out over the next few weeks or so, you'll start seeing that. And it's pretty exciting, we have some new security features, insurance, we, you know, it'll be rolled out here, you'll see all the information over the next week or two. So stay tuned for, stay tuned for that. I do want to say we did get another donation, I think I mentioned a few council meetings ago about extending our floating boardwalk. We have, we have received the funds for that. So right now, we're working on purchasing the equipment, and then we still have to get a little trail from where it ends on the, on the land back to the trail. So we're, we're working on those with the Service Department, we'll do that probably, probably in-house, but we have got that donation.
Is that Center Valley?
Yeah, we have Center Valley, where the old...
Turtle Pond.
Turtle Pond is, so we're now going to be able to go, it's a hundred and ten feet out, now we'll be able to swing a right and go, and go to the shore now. So it's kind of exciting. Now you can go a full loop, it's not just an in-and-out. So we're looking forward to that project. Hopefully, late spring, early summer, depending on the weather, because that area does flood pretty easily, so we have to be able to get in there. Also, we've been working with Metro Parks, it should be coming to Architectural View Board, either this next meeting or the one after, to have an entrance sign for the Dog Park, so it'll look very similar to the recreation signs and their Liberty Park Nature Center sign, it'll be at the entrance to the Dog Park parking lot. So that's, should be coming here soon. We're in crazy seasonal hiring notes, so if you're looking for a job. We will, you can go to mytwinsburg.com and find lifeguard information, day camp leaders, that sort of stuff. Even volunteers, volunteers do still need to go online and fill out the application that way, so if you're wanting to volunteer for camp, you'll want to go through the website to do that. We are working on Rock the Park, the schedule's pretty much finalized, we've got a few other things working out with that. And I do want to announce the Twinsburg Bicentennial is in two thousand and seventeen. We've had a committee together for about six months or so, already working on that. We have archivists that are in town doing oral histories of many, many residents, and we will be putting together a book by the end, it'll be done by the end of next year, distributed beginning of two thousand and seventeen. What we do want to announce a date I want to give to you is May twelfth, we'll be doing our website launch. So that'll be the initial, pretty much, we're here. So that'll be the initial, pretty much, we're here, the bicentennial is ready to go. We are going to have, looking for feedback from residents. Maybe you know something about the history that maybe someone else doesn't. You want to leave a little note, oh, you should check out this, or did you hear about this? So we get the residents who have been here much longer than some of the people on the committee, like myself, that might have some input about some history, or you might have an artifact that you think should be included in this. And so that'll all be starting May 12th, where we release that. You all get a formal invitation for that, but kind of a save the date. Within our department, everyone's wondering what's going on, you know, how do I hear about these things? When do things go on sale? Make sure you find us on Facebook. That's probably the best way. But also, if you go to twinsburgrecreation.com, we have an e-newsletter that's going out monthly. And with our new marketing director, it's, you know, very professional, very well done, that you can just put your email address on there, and you'll get our monthly newsletter. But I think between the website, to a degree, but Facebook and the e-blast is probably your best ways to find out what's going on in our department. That's all I have.
Derek. On the 24 hours of the Fitness Center, is there going to be an attendant or employee there overnight?
There will not. We will staff at the same hours that we're currently staffing it. After hours, we have different security measures. Chief Noga has been through the facility. We have different, we'll be installing these emergency phones throughout the facility. We have emergency lanyards that you can press the button with signage that says, you know, what they're for, you know, not just hanging there on the wall. But, you know, we, you know, it's kind of, you know, work with their buddy or wear one of these sort of things so that you have that.
That's my, that was my concern, at 3:00 in the morning, somebody goes down in there, and nobody's there until 6:00.
Yep. And there's, whenever those are pushed, the police force has a live feed into all of our cameras in there as well, so they can, they can see all their FOBs that are currently accessing, both the fire department and the PD will access our FOBs too. So regardless of who's on shift, they don't have to make sure they get the right FOB. Their FOB will get them into that facility as well. And when I say, you know, most of our staff leaves at 9:30 on a typical night, custodians are there longer, you know, they're just not actively watching. And they're, and in reverse, they're there in the morning as well before anyone. So it's not like there's this 12-hour window. But it will occur on holidays, you know, Christmas, if you want to come workout, none of us are going to be there, but the facility will be open.
Okay.
Thanks. No reason not to go.
All right, thanks Derek. Collette?
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
In the HR department, we're in the process of preparing for our big annual enrollment for our benefits for our employees. That will take place on the second week of February. So I've been working on finalizing some of our plan designs and options, and be getting those final figures out to the employees later this week. I completed our 2015 OSHA summary report. As required, I forwarded that to the departments for posting. It has been posted for three months. We did pretty well last year for, I think we had something like 15 recordable accidents, with some of them being extremely minor, a bee sting, anything's recordable that you go and seek medical attention for. As Derek mentioned, the seasonal hiring is in full swing. I posted several of the new seasonal jobs on our website using our new Civic HR tracking system. It had a few glitches when we first rolled it out, but it's working great now, and I think it's going to be a big improvement for recruiting and hiring and tracking of all our applicants going forward. We're going to be beginning negotiations with our AFSMI units. The second week of February, the 17th of February is the first scheduled negotiation for that. And then our healthcare cost containment committee met on January 19th. I wasn't actually at that meeting, but someone from our, well, Jen Batenson from our Fitness Center presented a proposal for a wellness program that could, that we could run potentially in-house. She, she did a great job putting it together. It's still in draft form, but we're hoping that that's going to develop into a really nice program for our employees. In the civil service department, there was no civil service meeting in January because there was no agenda. The next meeting for the civil service is February 18th. In the IT department, the records room over in the police department is being remodeled. So this involves a lot of IT time and moving computers and cables and rovers and other things. Also with IT, they've recently completed upgrading all the computers at the senior center. They've all got Windows 7, they've all got new larger monitors, and so, big improvement over there. That's it.
Collette, did we go out for bids on healthcare?
We, we shopped the market for healthcare.
Did we go out for bids from other people and have them come in and talk to us? And who did we shop the market with?
We're renewing with Medical Mutual this year.
How much is that going to cost us in premium?
Still in the process. We're still in the process. We don't have the final numbers yet.
But it's going up.
It will be going up, probably.
So we, my question is, is why didn't we, did we talk to the people down in some county?
We did.
We did?
Yes.
Did they save us any money? Did we actually find out what it was going to cost, or did we do what we've done in the past, wait till it's too late?
We got a quote from them.
We did?
Yes.
And where did that come in?
It came in at a 9% increase.
Versus how much for Medical Mutual?
We don't know yet.
We don't know yet.
Okay.
However, there's more to consider than just the rates.
It's the dollars and cents for the residents of the city of Twinsburg. How much are we going to spend on premiums? A lot.
Yep.
Yeah, we, we've been in-depth conversations with our current broker. We've talked with a different organization that we're going to be moving to. It's going to help us really manage our costs and really root down into some of the issues that we have, you know. It's not just about rate here. You know, we've got to change the, kind of the culture of how our employees use and spend with regards to medical services. You can shop rate all, all day long. At the end of the day, you're going to look at, you know, 10 to 20% increase every year, unless you change the way that your employees look and, and, you know, they got to buy into helping reduce claim costs versus, you know, and we haven't really had that or tried to do that in the past. And that's something that we're really looking at. There's a lot of different things we're looking at from a healthcare standpoint, Brian. So we've gone with Oswald Company, which is a large, very resourceful organization that's going to help us negotiate and manage our healthcare costs. Hopefully, long-term, what we're going to see is continued decline in our claim. You know, we ran at about 132% of our, of our premium that was collected last year, which is very difficult, very difficult bargaining power to go to other brokers or to other companies and shop. Okay? If you can get a quote, it's not going to be anything that you want to see. So, you know, I've taken a more global approach to saying what our healthcare costs are going to do and how we're going to manage them. So that's where we stand.
I just think we should have went out, and if it's 9%, what are you going to do if Medical Mutual comes back at 20 to 25%?
They're not going to.
Which is one of the numbers that's been out.
They're not going to.
So. Okay.
Well, she got, anybody else? Karen.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to give you an update on what's happening as far as audits. 2015 audit is being prepared. You will be getting questionnaires. The only thing, the nice thing this time around is that you won't be getting those questionnaires asking you various questions like that. That's something that has been removed, so won't be bothered with that. But I have informed the department heads as well to be prepared, get their receipts and all that in order as they come in. Again, we're going with Parent Associates, which was selected by the state auditor's office, and they have us for, I think, five years. So just kind of updating you on that. I'll let you know when they start the process of coming in. But typically, we send, we push a lot of PDF information over to them just to help them get started with the day of getting the audit ready for us. Also, House Bill 5 is in full effect as of January 1. House Bill 5 is a control of uniformity of our income tax collection that has started in pretty aggressively. We've gotten already some calls asking about the questions of how that's going to affect the city. And again, we initially had a number of maybe $500,000 loss in the early set of when the House Bill 5 was passed or was being worked on. And we also, we've discovered now that that number is lower, and it's going to come in between $200,000, $300,000 loss. Nothing's confirmed yet, being that this is the first year, we really won't know how much that's going to impact us. So in addition to the quarter percent being rescinded, we'll be losing an additional $200,000 to $300,000 more. Also, you have before us a 2016 appropriations that is on its first reading. And thank you, Scafidi, for bringing it to attention to have a finance committee meeting where we'll be talking about our estimated revenue that is coming in. We still not have received any final numbers from the Cogga, I mean, from Summit County. They're still working on that, so I'll let you know when they certify those numbers. And that will have an impact as far as how our revenue flow is, as far as what we'll be getting distributed from Summit County. Lastly, we did receive our collections for January. For the month of January, we received $1,604,106 compared to January 2015 receipts of $1,875,448. This does reflect an additional decrease of 12% or $202,341 compared to last year. Refunds have been $2,757. The net cash distribution applied due to the quarter percent reduction, $201,264. That's all I have to report.
Thanks, Karen. That's all we have for this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we will move on to legislation. First, we have Ordinance 159, 2015.
An ordinance establishing the salaries, wages, and employment descriptions for certain employees of the city and updating classifications of employees to be known as the 2016 Salary Ordinance and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 159, 2015. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Stoffer. Discussion.
Did you just put that on emergency?
Yep.
This is its third reading.
Yeah, it's an emergency just so that we don't have a 30-day waiting period.
So, did you put it on 35, where you declared emergency?
You just suspended rules.
They changed it to an emergency.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that, I'm sorry. Then I need to suspend the rules on Ordinance 159, 2015, declare an emergency, and present its third and final reading. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Stoffer seconds for the emergency. Any discussion?
Purpose for the emergency is they want to have it in effect tomorrow.
All right, good. Anything else? Shannon, call the roll, please.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McPheron?
Yes.
Okay, now I need a motion to adopt Ordinance 159, 2015 as an emergency. Anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Mrs. Stoffer, is there a second?
No second.
Ms. McPheron. Discussion on the adoption.
Sure. We discussed many, several changes in the compensation committee. I'm going to start in the back. I'd like to remove, I make a motion that we remove the recycle commission from the back page under board submissions, and that we also remove under council president the 2019, 2021 salary schedule as well under council person. I would like to remove the 2019 and 2021 salary schedule, being that this is a two to, a three to four-year document. We're well outside the range on those. We no longer have a recycle committee, and, so that's my motion.
That's your motion, okay.
That we remove those things.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Mr. Sorese seconds. Any discussion on those two changes? Shannon, call the roll.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McPheron?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay. Now I need, we already have a motion for adoption.
I'm not done.
No, I'm sorry. I thought you were done.
Council has to set the salary for the mayor, so I make a motion that we adopt a salary for the mayor at 103,019.
That's it? Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Mr. Sorese. Any discussion? Shannon, call the roll.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McPheron?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Thank you. One more. I'm not comfortable with adding the full-time employee under the Division of Human Resources that was given us a memo this evening for the same reasons I stated earlier this evening. Three years ago, we were paying $75,000 and no benefits for the, for the HR position. Now we're close to $90,000 with benefits. This will add benefits in addition to this. So that's a swing of about $35,000 to $40,000 per year. Also, with the new broker that I understand we're getting, supposed to be, there's additional features and benefits that are supposed to make it easier to deal with the company. I would like to not put this through since the first time we saw the salary ordinance in its new format was 15 days ago, and really didn't get any information on this position tonight. I'd like to remove that from the salary ordinance this evening and revisit it at a later date after some additional study.
That's your motion?
It is.
And I'll second it. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to say is that the broker we're moving to is not relieving responsibilities of our HR department. They're just providing us additional services on an annual basis that's going to help engage our employees as well as administration in seeking ways to reduce healthcare costs. So just wanted to correct that comment.
And I also wanted to mention Karen said she needed this person, and had requested it years ago. And I appreciate you waiting and not getting that person and having, having them train them on software that wasn't up to date. So you waited, I think, a number of years. I appreciate you doing that, and I support this.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Shannon, call the roll.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
No.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McPheron?
No.
Mrs. Stoffer?
No.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Sorese?
Yes.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, now we want to vote on the adoption as amended, as emergency. We already had, I think Mrs. Stoffer made the motion.
Mrs. Stoffer and then Ms. McPheron.
Mm-hmm, sorry.
Mrs. Stoffer made the motion, Ms. McPheron, sorry.
Okay. Call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
We no longer have a recycle committee, and, so that's my motion.
That's your motion, okay.
That we remove those things.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Mr. Ceraci seconds. Any discussion on those two changes? Shannon, call the roll.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, I need, we already have a motion for adoption.
I'm not done.
No, I'm sorry. I thought you were done.
Council has to set the salary for the mayor, so I make a motion that we adopt a salary for the mayor at 103,019.
That's it? Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Mr. Ceraci. Any discussion? Shannon, call the roll.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, I need, we already have a motion for adoption.
I'm not done.
No, I'm sorry. I thought you were done.
Council has to set the salary for the mayor, so I make a motion that we adopt a salary for the mayor at 103,019.
That's it? Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Mr. Ceraci. Any discussion? Shannon, call the roll.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Okay, now, we want to vote on the adoption as amended, as emergency. We already had, I think Mrs. Stoffer made the motion.
Mrs. Stoffer and then Ms. McFerrin.
Mm-hmm. Sorry.
Mrs. Stoffer made the motion, Ms. McFerrin, sorry.
Okay. Call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Okay, now, we want to vote on the adoption as amended, as emergency. We already had, I think Mrs. Stoffer made the motion.
Mrs. Stoffer and then Ms. McFerrin.
Mm-hmm. Sorry.
Mrs. Stoffer made the motion, Ms. McFerrin, sorry.
Okay. Call the roll.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 159, 2015 passes as emergency, as amended, 7-0.
Next, we have ordinance number 2, 2016.
An ordinance amending section 911.05M of the charter, of the chapter 911 of the codified ordinances of the city of Twinsburg to clarify and update requirements for exemption from residential initial connection sewer charges.
Okay, that's on its second reading. We have ordinance 3, 2016.
An ordinance amending the Twinsburg Accuency Program established by ordinance 144, 2004, by changing eligibility criteria and certain administrative procedures.
Okay, that's also on its second reading. We have ordinance number 4, 2016.
An ordinance amending section 147.28, educational reimbursement of the codified ordinance of the city of Twinsburg and declaring an emergency.
Okay. I need a motion to suspend the rules. I'll make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance number 4, 2016, put it in its third and final reading, and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
No second.
Mr. Fury seconds. Any discussion on the emergency? Shannon, call the roll.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Okay, now, we want to vote on the adoption as amended, as emergency. Next, we have ordinance number 2, 2016.
An ordinance amending section 911.05M of the charter, of the chapter 911 of the codified ordinances of the city of Twinsburg to clarify and update requirements for exemption from residential initial connection sewer charges.
Okay, that's on its second reading. We have ordinance 3, 2016.
An ordinance amending the Twinsburg Accuency Program established by ordinance 144, 2004, by changing eligibility criteria and certain administrative procedures.
Okay, that's also on its second reading. We have ordinance number 4, 2016.
An ordinance amending section 147.28, educational reimbursement of the codified ordinance of the city of Twinsburg and declaring an emergency.
Okay. I need a motion to suspend the rules. I'll make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance number 4, 2016, put it in its third and final reading, and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
No second.
Mr. Fury seconds. Any discussion on the emergency? Shannon, call the roll.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Stoffe?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 4, 2016 passes as amended, as emergency. Seven zero. Oh, my goodness.
Watch this resolution.
What's that? Wow, that was confusing. Next, we have resolution number 5, 2016.
A resolution appointing two members to the planning commission and declaring an emergency.
Okay. I want to make a motion that we adopt resolution number 5, 2016 as an emergency. Is there a second?
No second.
Mr. Fury seconds. Okay, the names of the folks that we're putting in there would be, Ward 1 would be Matt Salura, and Ward 2 would be, I mean, I'm sorry, Matt Bova. Number 2 would be Pete Metropolis. Any discussion on number 5, 2016? Shannon, call the roll.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Thank you. One more. I'm not comfortable with adding the full-time employee under the Division of Human Resources that was given us a memo this evening, for the same reasons I stated earlier this evening. Three years ago, we were paying $75,000 and no benefits for the, for the HR position. Now, we're close to $90,000 with benefits. This will add benefits in addition to this, so that's a swing of about $35,000 to $40,000 per year. Also, with the new broker that I understand we're getting, supposed to be, there's additional features and benefits that are supposed to make it easier to deal with the company. I would like to not put this through since the first time we saw this salary ordinance in its new format was 15 days ago, and really didn't get any information on this position tonight. I'd like to remove that from the salary ordinance this evening and revisit it at a later date after some additional study.
That's your motion?
It is.
I'll second it. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to say is that the broker we're moving to is not relieving responsibilities of our HR department. They're just providing us additional services on an annual basis that's going to help engage our employees, as well as administration, in seeking ways to reduce healthcare costs. So, just wanted to correct that comment.
And I also wanted to mention Karen said she needed this person, and had requested it years ago, and I appreciate you waiting and not getting that person, and having, having them train them on software that wasn't up to date. So, you waited, I think, a number of years. I appreciate you doing that, and I support this.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Shannon, call the roll.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
No.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
No.
Mrs. Stoffer?
No.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 4, 2016 passes as amended, as an emergency, 7-0. Oh, my goodness.
Watch this resolution.
What's that? Wow, that one was confusing. Next, we have resolution number 5, 2016.
A resolution appointing two members to the planning commission and declaring an emergency.
Okay. I want to make a motion that we adopt resolution number 5, 2016 as an emergency. Is there a second? Mr. Fury seconds. Okay, the names of the folks that we're putting in there would be, Ward 1 would be Matt Salura, and Ward 2 would be, I mean, I'm sorry, Matt Bova. Number 2 would be Pete Metropolis. Any discussion on number 5, 2016? Shannon, call the roll.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 5, 2016 passes 7-0 as an emergency. We have ordinance number 6, 2016.
The annual appropriation ordinance for the year 2016 prepared by council from the estimates submitted by the mayor, providing for the ordinary expenses and other necessary expenses of the city of Twinsburg, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2016.
Okay, and that's its first reading tonight. We have ordinance number 7, 2016.
An ordinance amending section 151.01 of the codified ordinances of the city of Twinsburg regarding the environmental commission and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules on ordinance number 7, 2016, put it in its third and final reading, and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules on ordinance number 7, 2016, put it on its third and final reading and declare it an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Roden?
Thank you.
Second. Is there any discussion on the emergency? Okay, call the roll please.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I need a motion to adopt ordinance number 7, 2016. Mr. Roden makes that motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. McFerrin. Discussion, what this.
We need to adopt it as an emergency.
As an emergency. What this does is it changes the environmental commission, there's seven members on the environmental commission, but they will now be non-ward specific. So, anything else?
Yeah, I will just say we had great candidates that came out, and that is what has moved us to go this route because we had such good candidates that we didn't want to be kinda confined with just ward specific.
Anything else? Shannon, call the roll.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 7, 2016 passes 7-0 as an emergency. Resolution number 8, 2016.
A resolution appointing three members to the Board of Zoning Code Appeals and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution number 8, 2016 as an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Fury, seconds. The residents we will be putting on there will be Thomas Brown in Ward 1, Chris Griffith in Ward 4, and Joe Zeitz in Ward 5. Any other discussion? Shannon, call the roll.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution number 8, 2016 passes 7-0 as an emergency. Resolution number 9, 2016.
A resolution appointing three members to the capital improvement board and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I want to make a motion that we adopt resolution number 9, 2016 as an emergency. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Steele, seconds. The residents that we were looking to appoint to the capital improvements board tonight are Dennis Kaplan in Ward 1, David Painter in Ward 2, and Gregory Solomon in Ward 3. Any discussion? Shannon, call the roll.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution number 9, 2016 passes 7-0 as an emergency. Resolution number 10, 2016.
A resolution appointing four members to the environmental commission and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution number 10, 2016. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Roden, seconds. The residents we will be appointing to the environmental commission will be Chuck Benacci in Ward 1, Daisy Walker in Ward 2, Jamie Zamicil in Ward 3, and Scott Barr in Ward 4. Any discussion on number 10?
Well, those aren't wards.
Actually, those are non-wards.